Okay, Robert Scott is. Everybody ready? Welcome to the Town of Lake Clark Shores Town Council Meeting, January 16, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember John Maples.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Taylor-Materio.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We could all please rise for a moment of silence in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. But this evening, we will have a moment of silence for Carrie Shilly. Unfortunately, she was forty-seven years young. She's a city clerk for the city of Cocoa. Also, John Spradley, he was eighty-two years young. And he passed on twelve, twelve, twenty-three and was a resident since August of nineteen seventy-three. Also, Albert Mahanes passed on twelve, nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, sixty-seven years old and was a town resident. And last but not least, we have Manly P. Caldwell, Jr., that's on twelve, twenty-three, twenty-three, senior partner at a law firm, Caldwell, Pacetti, Edwards, Scheck, and Viator. May perpetual light shine upon these souls, Lord. Thank you. Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's look to the Lord. This is what the Lord Almighty says. Build houses and settle down. Plant gardens and eat what they produce. Marry and have sons and daughters. Also, seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you too will prosper. This is what the Lord Almighty says. Father in heaven, indeed, we desire to fulfill your word. Our desire is that we would serve you and serve you well. We seek your wisdom and your knowledge and your blessing upon us. Bind us together. We come before you in thy precious and holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, good evening, everyone. We will start with audience comments this evening. We have Natalie Moran, correct? Nathalie, okay. Please come up and introduce yourself. Give us your name, rank, and serial number and tell us what you have on your mind.
Nathalie Moran. Um, three quick things. People are running stop signs using our street for a racetrack and people are moving out and dumping their cats. How I know? Because my husband and I are feeding two of them. The, in the house behind us, I guess everybody knows David, David James. I'm not sure what his name is.
I'm not positive either.
But his, I have pictures on my phone. The whole fence is falling over. But before he was pushing, his fence was pushing my fence over. So our fence, we have to get it repaired. But his fence is rotting and everything is coming apart. It's falling that way and pulling up. You can smell.
Hmm.
So, these are the things that I'd like to see addressed, have something done because at night, people are just running did stop signs. They're using the, they're speeding down the road. This happens every night, every weekend. And then we, and it just seems like nothing's getting done.
Well, we're gonna cover that this evening. Stick around because we have a traffic study and some of that information will be addressed. Yes, thank you so much. Is there any other audience comments at this time? Yes, ma'am. Come right up.
Carol Hassel, seven, two, zero, five, Westlake Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Anybody that's seen that movie on Showtime? Julius, where the guy goes up in front of the council and just every week complains about this thing. It's a good movie. Everybody should see it. My issue is the jet skis at the boat ramp.
At the boat ramp?
Yes.
Yes.
Today, they were there from twelve-thirty to almost four o'clock. Taking the whole boat ramp up and they're out there making annoying noises that I can hear in parts of my house for all those many hours. And they're over there two or three times a week. And today, when I was over there, a boat was trying to back in to maybe flush the engines. I don't know if he was trying to get in the lake or not. And he, they had, they had to move all their stuff out of the, they take up the whole boat ramp. And they leave their crafts parked in the water.
Are they doing repairs on them over there also? No?
Yeah, well, I think if one breaks down, yeah, but they're doing this stunt stuff. And to me, I know they took a grant to make the boat ramp nice, which is nice, and they had to open it to whoever. But there's no rules over there. There should be a whole board of rules. I don't think there should be any parking over there at all. Because it's really not made for parking. It's made for offloading and picking up boats.
Right.
And it takes up a lot of space and those people are there for hours. You know, and maybe today it was Quebec and New Jersey and New York plates over there. Whether they have stickers or not, I have no idea. But people are finding out that this is a little enclave for the jet skis. Jumpin's Park has been their place forever and it's much more suited for that. The boat ramp is twice as big.
I do agree there should be some courtesy and etiquette there and they should not park there continuously. The no parking is a different issue. There are other areas that can park. The chief's not here yet.
No.
But we'll, we'll talk to the chief because I, I've talked to a few people that use a boat ramp frequently like that and that is an issue. We can't stop them from putting their jet skis in, can't stop them from using the lake. But we can encourage some etiquette and courtesy to the other boaters because I have seen them down there. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Well, and the people that live around there, the one lady is, is she's not, she's not with it. The other people are working. But for us that are around, you know, for that many hours of that stunt and jumping is not real. I mean, there's other places they could go that are much like.
Somebody actually came to my house and knocked on my door to talk about that, too.
It's very frustrating.
Yes, I know.
So that, that's what my.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other comments? Elaine, or Louise, come up. I'm sorry. You'll be next. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Louise Bing and I am from seven, four, oh, one, Westlake Drive, right near the boat ramp. I have something rather horrifying to me that is starting around the boat ramp area. And it's basically just the north from the bridge on right up to Lake Clark to the main street. And we have a lot of traffic now, as everyone knows, in that area. And that's fine. We're doing, we're working with it very well. However, in addition to people who are walking their dogs and are riding bicycles and the trucks and the cars, we now have people who are both riding their bicycles and walking their dogs at the same time. And it's horrible and it's an accident waiting to happen. And I remember when I lived in Fort Lauderdale, we did have such a thing and there were, there was one person who would come and he'd have, he'd be on his bicycle and he'd be, I think, holding on to the leash and the dog would have to follow with him. And all we need is one little something to knock the dog over or to frighten him and the whole thing's gonna collapse. And I have seen that happen in Fort Lauderdale, as I say, and it was a mess and there was blood and I don't know. We never saw the dog again. It was a little poodle and we never saw the owner of the dog again. And I don't think that there's anything in ordinance about being against riding your bicycle while you're holding on to the dog. Or the dog is just maybe tied to the bicycle, but it, excuse me, it's something that is an accident waiting to happen. And I wish that we could, even if the police or the code enforcement would just stop along them and say, that's very dangerous. Please talk to your veterinarian about this or something. And it's, it spoils the whole thing to walk for the dog because that's supposed to be the dog's time to be able to walk. And, and all he's doing is trying to stay alive, keeping up with him, with his master on the boat. So I hope we can do something to stop it because I see it almost every day now. Thank you.
Thank you. Tori, you're next. No, you're good. Okay. Is there anybody else with any comments? No, we're good. Okay, very good. Okay, we'll have a motion for approval of agenda. That's gotta come from this side over here.
I will make the motion.
Okay, second.
I will second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's motion for consent. That's gotta go to you, too.
Yeah, I will make a motion for the consent agenda.
Okay, second.
I will second.
Taylor, okay, all in favor? It's all Carrie's. Okay, we have no presentations, no quasi judicial proceedings, no public hearing. Unfinished business. Mr. Brian Kelly is here to talk about our traffic calming study. We're so happy to see you. How are you this evening?
We're great, thank you.
We've all read your report, so you can share your findings and thank you for being here.
Excellent. For introduction, my name is Brian Kelly. I'm a professional traffic engineer with Simmons and White. Our firm is located in West Palm Beach. We've been around since nineteen eighty-two, focused on civil and traffic engineering. I've been with them coming up on about eleven years. A little bit about myself, I've been a traffic engineer for seventeen years. And in fact, I'm born and raised in Palm Beach County. Actually, went to Meadow Park Elementary School right around the corner. I was not a resident of Lake Clark Shores, but I lived very, very close by, so I know the area well. I hope everyone can see the PowerPoint. I'm gonna try to click and go through it. If somehow I screw up, please just interrupt. Let me know. This isn't a very long presentation, but I wanna make sure we, we cover everything here.
Okay.
All right, looks like it's working. So what was the purpose of the traffic calming study? It was to evaluate the existing roadway characteristics, including traffic control and calming devices. And I'll explain the difference of those in a minute. Review existing informal traffic calming policy, review existing traffic data, and make recommendations as applicable. So the existing roadway conditions, you guys probably know all this, but here's kind of them in numbers. It's primarily two-lane residential roadways. They're all about twenty-two feet in width. Some of them obviously do vary. There are some differences. But most roads are about twenty-two feet in width, which is a common for a residential roadway. Posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour. Generally, there are a couple of locations that are different, but that's the speed limit for the most of the town. There are seven radar speed signs, sixteen speed humps or tables, eighteen always-stop intersections. And I'm gonna kind of make this comment on the existing pavement. I'm kind of calling it serviceable, but there's certainly some asphalt cracking and deterioration at various locations. Some of the pavements, obviously, better certain areas than, than other locations. So here's an exhibit here. It may be a little bit hard to see, but I kind of wanna go over it a little bit. So this is a graphic of the traffic calming and control devices throughout the town. So in here, you'll see a little square box that are the locations of the speed humps and the speed tables, the radar speed signs and the stop signs. Now, the stop signs that are shown on here are not every single stop sign. These only represent what are considered the always-stop intersections. And I do wanna talk about this for a minute because a lot of times there's confusion on what is traffic calming, what is traffic control? And I alluded to that just a minute ago. I do a lot of work for HOAs and actually other municipalities for these types of traffic calming studies. And one of the most common requests I get is, hey, we're having a speeding issue. Can you come put a, can we put a stop sign here and stop the speeding? The short answer is no. Always stops are not a form of traffic calming. They're not a method for reducing speed. And what happens is studies have shown, if you put too many stop signs, essentially always stops where they're not really supposed to be, people end up speeding up between them to make up lost time. The other issue is sometimes people start running them because they intuitively know, okay, I'm on the major street. There really, there's not a lot of traffic on the side street. So they can actually, if you put them in the incorrect locations, can sometimes actually be less safe and actually more of a little bit of a speeding issue. Now, the whole reason I bring that up is just because there's some, it's a little bit counterintuitive and people think of those as, as traffic calming solutions when, when they're not. However, they are useful for various reasons. Number one, they assign right away. Sometimes depending on the traffic volume, they're appropriate. And sometimes you have sight distance issue, right? You have a lot of road curvatures. You have landscaping, stuff like that, where if you don't have an always-stop, it may be hard to see somebody coming from the side. So I just kind of wanted to present that out there and kind of put it on record, a trap, from a traffic engineer, kind of the purpose of always stops. Why I have this graphic, graphic up here. Speed humps and speed tables, I'll, I'll talk briefly in a minute what the difference are. You know, a lot of times people think of speed bumps. There's actually three criteria and they're used all interchangeably. So speed bumps are those little yellow ones you get in commercial areas. They're awful. You gotta go two, three miles per hour over it. It's very noisy. It's very rough on the car. You don't have any of those fortunately in the town and they're not meant for residential roadways. Speed humps are the ones that are about twelve to fourteen feet in width. You, most of your traffic calming devices are actually speed humps. Depending on the type of car you have, you may be able to go about fifteen miles per hour comfortably. If you have an SUV or truck, it may be a little bit different. Those are appropriate. Those are, they, they have you going at appropriate speed. You don't have to come to a complete stop, but you know, you can still go over them fairly comfortable. Now, the final one is what's called a speed table. Those are twenty-two feet generally in length. They have a flat top and they have about six feet on either side where they ramp up. These are really the best, the most useful ones now. You go a little bit faster over them, about fifteen to twenty miles per hour. Fire rescue typically likes them a little bit better. They're a little bit less noisy. I think you have one or two of those actually within the town. I know you have one on Westlake Drive around the corner. I think you also on the other side of Forest Hill. I think there's two of them over there just off the top of my head. Sorry. Here we go, traffic data. Okay, so I'm probably gonna go to the next slide fairly quickly, but because it has this in a table format, which I think is gonna be a little bit more useful for you guys. What we did is we actually got this information over several months from the police department regarding what the traffic volumes are and what the fiftieth and eighty-fifth percentile speeds are at each of your speed radar location. So this is great information because normally we go out and do counts. We only have two or three days of data. I actually got, you know, months of data, which is really quality because that's, that's over a much longer period of time. I'm gonna go to the next slide and then we'll start talking about what this means. Here we go. So this is that previous slide, but essentially in table format. And so average daily traffic, that's just your two-way traffic that's going over there over a twenty-four-hour period. This is just an average number over that, that length of time. The fiftieth percentile speed that you can think of that obviously is kind of your average speed. And then the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So if you kind of think back to your SAT days or school days, what this means is that number, that speed, eighty-five percent of the people are either going that speed or slower and fifteen percent or more are going that much or faster. And this is actually a number that the FDOT uses, the Federal Highway Administration uses. And the reason is they've done enough studies essentially that has said, generally speaking, people drive a reasonable speed, but there's that fifteen percent of people that don't drive a reasonably speed. And that's what we really need to kind of pay attention to and, you know, what we may need to design to. So looking on your far right column there, if you can see at the eighty-fifth percentile speed, you can see it ranges from about twenty-four miles per hour to the highest one, about twenty-nine point three miles per hour. I will tell you, I do traffic data collection all the time. I've done it for years. This is well on the lower end of what I see for a lot of residential communities and roadways. This is, the eighty-fifth percentile speed is really within five miles per hour of the posted speed limit. That is very good. Most places I look at, it's very common to see well over five, sometimes over ten, and sometimes really bad instances where it's fifteen miles per hour or even more over the posted speed limit. So evaluating this data over a number of days and months as we were able to get from the police department, the general conclusion was there's not a town-wide speeding issue. Is there potentially isolated instances? Of course. Certainly, as I mentioned, this is the eighty-fifth percentile speed. That doesn't mean there's not five people flying down the road at various times. That is certainly, you know, not comfortable and it can be, you know, can be a safety issue. So why is there no speeding issues? So as that previous slide showed a few slides ago, there's a lot of traffic coming out there already. Those radar speed signs are out there. Those are effective. Those are helpful in making sure people understand what the speed is. It's also the design of the roadways. So when you're on a regular arterial roadway, you're on Forest Hill Boulevard, I ninety-five, you have a large pavement width. Sometimes it's twelve feet, maybe you have a shoulder there. You have fourteen, sixteen feet of asphalt. And there's not a lot of driveways. When you're driving in a residential roadway, you have mailboxes to your side. You have curvature of the road. You have all this, what we kind of call friction, that kind of makes you not so comfortable. Even having the centerline striping that you do, not on every road, but you have on certain roadways, even that helps you kind of align your road, your car, and it makes you feel kind of cramped in there going down the road. Now, certainly, this doesn't mean everybody's abiding by that. There's always exceptions to it. But the design of the roadways, the curvature and just the nature of it, and the fact is, the fact you don't have sidewalks, you'll see people walking and biking and people will, you know, slow down because of that as well. So the design of the roadways is a big one. And third, I think this is huge, too, the police enforcement. You know, I was able to spend some time with the chief and, and kind of go over some of the data and the numbers they have and, and the tickets enforcement they do. And that makes a huge difference. Number one, just having police out there visible, so you can see them from time to time. That gets in people's heads. That makes a big difference. And certainly when they're, you know, issuing tickets or issuing warnings, whatever that may be, does, you know, does have a major factor in, in containing speed. So recommendations. I don't have an extensive list of recommendations and the main reason is if, if it's working, you don't need to necessarily reinvent the wheel here. So the recommendations I do have are to keep your existing traffic calming as you have because the data shows it's working, that there's not a town-wide speeding issue. I would recommend that the speed humps you do have, whenever you have future roadway projects come in, that you do replace, replace those with speed tables, those larger ones I talked about. They're a little bit more comfortable to drive over. They're a little bit less noisy. So, you know, the residents typically like them a little bit better and also for fire rescue, they tend to be preferred as well. There, there was a couple of speed humps on Venetian Way that are kind of sat really close to each other. I don't have a strong preference on which one necessarily gets removed at which location, but there's a temporary rubber one there that doesn't really meet kind of current standards. So either that, that one should go away and the permanent one either should shift over there or that one just be removed. Either way, once again, it's not necessarily a location issue for me. It's just there's two in kind of close proximity that don't necessarily need to be there. In police enforcement, continued police enforcement, that probably makes the biggest difference at all if there's issues, certainly at night or other times. That's where police enforcement can really come into play and make sure these speeds stay down. The other thing I do have is to adopt a formal traffic calming policy. In my report, I do make recommendations on a policy outline that I think is effective. The main reason is if you have someone that comes in and, you know, suggests some kind of traffic calming device, a speed hump or whatever it may be, you know, you wanna make sure there's a real issue there. So you wanna make sure that, number one, the residents support it, that are right around it, because there are trade-offs with traffic calming. There's not always a one-size solution that fits all. There's pros and cons with any kind of traffic calming device. And you wanna make sure there's a speeding issue. So you actually wanna get traffic data there to make sure you're not just, you know, putting it on a roadway that doesn't need to be there necessarily. So I do have that traffic comment policy. I'm happy to kind of go over that in more detail, but it is outlined in the report, as I mentioned. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to questions and I'm happy to speak on, you know, more detail on any of these particular items.
Taylor, any questions?
The speed table that you're talking about, that's right on Westlake when you enter. Okay. I'm just trying to understand where they all are and what they look like, but thank you very much.
Brian, thank you for this extensive report and the work you guys put in on getting this all up to date and the information for us. I wanted to ask, I know that under existing roadway conditions, you mentioned that survival life of an asphalt roadway typically ranges fifteen to twenty-five years due to a number of factors, including construction materials, technique, wear, interior maintenance. Majority of roadways generally appear to be in adequate condition currently. However, asphalt cracking here was observed at several locations, including the pavement. What areas or locations were you observing that cracking of the asphalt?
I mean, I, I guess I haven't necessarily specified them in here. I think as you drive around, you know, Lake Clark Shores, you can certainly see it. We didn't do, you know, the, to really identify how much usable life is left in a roadway. You really kind of gotta do core drilling and some other things that were certainly outside our scope. So this was kind of a general overview of it. So I guess I apologize. I don't necessarily have specific conditions, but if you drive around, obviously, you will notice in certain areas, there are, you know, asphalt cracking and it's, you know, not necessarily up to, you know, a new road standard.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I know you needed a silver engineer to do roadways and do some things there on that. And I was just curious, based on your report there. Are there any particular areas? I know generally this is kind of a general, all-encompassing Lake Clark Shores. Were there any areas, I know some residents have mentioned some specific areas near their homes that they've noticed some speeding. Did you guys have any particular areas that were kind of like a red flag for you or the police department, as you spoke and spent time with them? That could have been, that maybe you said, hey, maybe you maybe wanna consider looking at these areas a little bit more closely or maybe having police department on these areas. Was there anything kind of red flagging for you guys?
No, there, there really wasn't. And it doesn't necessarily mean there's nothing there, but, you know, we spent our time kind of looking at the data, driving around, speaking, you know, speaking to staff and speaking to the police department. And there wasn't really any area that we thought, okay, this is, you know, this is a red flag. This is a major issue.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, thank you so much. So just to be clear, this was not a road condition study. This was a traffic study.
Correct.
And a traffic calming study. So just to recap for everyone, the speed tables are best, correct, for everyone involved, residents, fire rescue, police department, everything. Status quo is recommended at the time is what I read in the report. Maintain enforcement, which is a double-edged sword in a small community. When you're on the receiving end of the enforcement, it's never fun. But I do believe it works. And I've been saying that, you know, people will give what we're willing to take. And if you just hand out a few tickets, unfortunate as it may be, the word will get out and people will slow down because I do agree with you. The traffic stop sign running happens mostly after the heavy hours. People are doing it when it's not in the mainframe, but most of the residents are probably obeying that stop sign. It's a lot of service vehicles, a lot of different people like that that are trying to make up that time because of that, that are doing. Police Department's doing a good job. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for that. And how about the, the speed signs that we have? You say that they appear to be working. Could it be a good recommendation that we invest in more of those or just, because I, I know that we, I don't wanna use the word, we fought to get them on, but we, we go to some of these conferences and things of that nature and we see them there. And we talk to those individuals that provide that. And if it seems to be working, it would seem to make sense that we could use more of those.
Yeah, I, I'm a big fan of radar speed signs and I'll, I'll kind of explain why. I was kind of talking a minute ago about trade-offs on traffic calming. Because normally when you do traffic calming in the road, you're doing either some kind of horizontal, vertical deflection. And, and it's good because it physically forces a vehicle to slow down. But that doesn't mean there's, there's not consequences to it. It does, you know, impact fire rescue. It slows them down. And if you're a resident, you know, when you have, you know, a speed hump outside, you probably get sick of it kind of being run over. It doesn't look the nicest. So there's some concept, this, the radar speed signs have no impact on fire rescue. They're, they're not noisy. So, I mean, there is some lights associated with them that may bother the residents, but to me, there's not a lot of downside with them. And while you don't get necessarily the same benefit or the same speed reduction as you do with speed tables, you do get some, especially if it's backed up by enforcement. So the data shows whenever you put a radar speed sign somewhere, it's effective immediately. And it doesn't mean you're getting a seven mile per hour drop in your, you know, eighty-fifth percentile speed, but you may get three or four miles per hour. And that makes a big difference. So, you know, from an average perspective. But over time, it'll start to slow down unless you have police enforcement. If police enforcement is there periodically, kind of backing that up and monitoring, then it's effective to stay. So yes, I am, I am a, a fan of that and I, I certainly support, you know, those in locations. Obviously, they're not the cheapest. Obviously they're not the cheapest because they are, you know, solar powered and everything else, but I, I do believe they're very beneficial.
Well, they only bother the residents when they flash when you're exceeding the speed limit. If you don't exceed the speed limit, they don't do that. So, Mr. Lobello, do you have any questions?
No, we've been working together for a while, so no.
All right. Well, thank you. This report is, will be available online for all the residents that want to look at it and review it and, and see where we stand. And I'm sure we can reach out to you in the future for other items. Is that everybody is okay? Everybody's good? Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Good seeing you, Brian.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Which is going to be council vacancies. So let's, amongst the three of us, discuss the council vacancies and which direction we think we should go. So I'm, I've been through this where we have appointed, I'll start this off. Moss Park, correct? You're here. She has displayed interest to me that she would like to. I don't think we need to do any appointing tonight. I've met with Joe. I think that we need to compile a group of people because we have, Bernadette will be coming on in April. So she'll be on. Taylor, yeah, April is when the swearing gets done. Voting is in March. Swearing in happens in April. So what are your, what are your thoughts?
I feel honored to have been appointed to this position and I'm finishing out someone's term. So I don't feel like I'm in the, the spot right now where I would want to appoint somebody. I would like to see, I'm sorry, I thought it was Bridget. It was.
Bridget, what?
Mayor has the ability now to second a motion.
I, I have any objections to her coming on early. It's not a problem for me. It would alleviate some problems if one of us weren't held up or, you know, whatever happens down the road, who knows? So how do we, Charlie, give us advice on this one? We just bring her in at the next meeting, swear her in and then re swear her in in April for her, her seat?
Correct.
Okay, so.
It would require the three of you to vote to appoint her.
Get that in form of a.
And, and we would then swear her in. Florida law requires that any elected official must be sworn in. And there's a specific oath that there will uphold the constitution of the state and of the United States. And that they're qualified, which means of course they're a U.S. citizen and a resident of the Lake Clark shores.
And so we would, now let me just make sure we're all clear here. Is she being sworn in on the seat that she qualified for or just being sworn in until that seat is available in April?
I would recommend, you could do either, but I would recommend that you swear her into the seat that she qualified on because that seat is available. And, and she would then have continuity of being the councilwoman from that particular seat. Effective at the time we swear her in and, and appoint her, and then she would continue in that seat going forward.
So we need one of you to make that in the form of a motion and you're up.
Not if I just volunteer her to start her job early.
Well, she has, she can have the option to say, no, thank you.
I, I have talked to her about it. She is available.
Okay, she is willing to do that. Okay. You want to come in and not get paid?
No, she'll get, she'll get paid. She'll spend that ninety-three dollars like.
Oh, no. Okay, perfect. So that's my first one. The other option is I also have spoken with Christie. And while she's here today at the meeting present, I love to hear from her about the opportunity presented of the open seat. And so while we have everyone from the town here, love to hear from her and she's dressed nice. She's here ready to present. So I'd love to hear from her about why she would be a great asset to this town.
Thank you. I'm Christie Moss Park. I think this place is heaven.
Can you, Chrissy, could you please give us your address also, please? Yes, speak into the microphone.
Should I face the, you or face the?
You, just long as you're talking to the microphone because it is public, right? We have to get it on tape.
I'm Christie Moss Park, seventy-seven-one Pine Tree Lane. And I absolutely love Lake Clark shores. I think it's the best place in Palm Beach County. I was born in Good Sam. I grew up here. I went to the day school. I went to Cardinal Newman. When I went to college in Virginia and then I spent sixteen years working on Wall Street. Where I also got an MBA. I was an investment banker. I was fixed income salesperson. So I have a finance background. And then I spent sixteen years raising my children, one of which is right here, the handsome fellow and their grandson Winston. My daughter, Chessie, I believe, is watching online tonight. And after I raised my children, I've started a, a real estate investment company where I fix and flip houses. And I invest in rental properties. I am very active in the town of Palm Beach United Way where I help them. I'm on the allocation committee where I help them figure out which charities should receive their six million dollars of investments that run by town resident Beth Walton. And I've affiliated with Path College on their advisory board. And I have active in my church. I served on the missions committee. And I would be an honor to represent you folks up on the dais here. If, if these good people decided I had something, excuse me, I had something to offer to the town.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Okay, so now the discussion turns to, should we take this next month's time in between this meeting and the next meeting to see if there's anybody else that's interested in being on council? Just to explore all the options. You sound very qualified, but in the past, that's how we've done that to allow more time. I mean, I don't, and haven't talked to anybody who hasn't heard of the three, you know, council members dropping off the council. It's in the news. It's everywhere across the state, across the county, the whole nine yards. So, you know, what do you all think about that? Letting Bridget, correct, Bridget, that watched me in my CRS, get here, have her input also. Because that way there's an additional person. And during this next time, anybody that you reach out to can reach out to Mr. Lobello. Get all of the credentials and all that kind of stuff, come in here and then we can make a decision.
So we, just for clarity, are we saying, hey, we're giving ourselves a month to follow this? And then they're going to come and share while they think they should be on the council and then we put forth the motion to.
Yeah, and then, and then, you know, between the four of us will make that decision.
With Bridget.
And then, and then we'll have, I think it's fair to include her.
Absolutely.
Because she's going to be a new council member also. She'll have her input.
I'm sure she will appreciate that.
Yes, of course. You know, it's just, it, it's just good business to, let's just see what's out there, who's out there and all that kind of stuff. I, you're very qualified. I know that. I've been, you, you're probably the front runner because everybody I talk to says, no, thank you. They've all heard about Form Six and everybody's like, ah, you know, they don't want to divulge, which is another story, but so that's, that's okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's what we'll do. So you can actually get with Mr. Lobello. And, and just talk, you've, you've spoken with her already, I think you have said, or?
No.
No?
Exactly. We talked.
Yeah, with the three of us, we just got back from Tallahassee. A lot going on up there. We have our hands full with that one. And we have another one coming up, which is even more important. There's several legislative agendas up there that are not favorable for municipalities like ours. So that's another story and we'll cover that after we go to that. That's coming up here at the end of January. So I, I guess that's it. I'm going to bring Bridget in at the next meeting. Joe, you'll reach out to her.
Yes.
Tell her to be here. We have in your report, the next meeting will be. Yes, sir.
I think we got to vote on it.
Yeah, we will.
On the Bridget?
But we, we are going to make a motion for Bridget.
Okay.
And then this one here, I don't think we need a motion for that to wait until next month.
Because you, you would typically swear the person in at the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Because you would typically swear the person in at the meeting. You can make that appointment and have her sworn in at the beginning of the meeting. And she can then participate immediately and you could actually do both vacancies or do one. And then there would be four of you to vote to fill the fifth vacancy.
I think that's the general consensus. Make it the four of us. So you'll make a motion that we swear her in at the next meeting. Yeah, we'll make that motion tonight. We'll swear her in at the next meeting. We can conduct interviews out in the open and everybody can get a chance to look at the candidates that want to be here and we'll go from there.
Sounds great.
So go ahead and make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, I guess we're, is this early? Like we're appointing her. Okay, we're going to appoint Ms. Bridget Keating. To group seat number five?
Five, I believe.
No.
No?
No. No?
Three. Three.
Three, three, three. All right. So let me restart that. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bridget Keating to group three, to the council.
And now, because of the timeframe of filing the financial disclosure forms, I would recommend that you put a timeframe on that and that would be effective at that next meeting. So that her thirty days doesn't start now and she doesn't take the oath until thirty days from now.
Effective February twentieth.
So it would be effective February?
Twentieth. We didn't check.
February twentieth. Complicated.
February twentieth will be the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. So effective February twentieth.
Yes.
All right. So a motion to appoint Bridget Keating to town council group seat three, effective February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second.
Second. All in favor? Carrie's three zero.
Congratulations, Bridget.
And, and then is it your intent then to, at that meeting after she is seated, to then select the, the fifth person?
Then we would interview.
Okay.
What we've done in the past.
Assuming there's more than one.
Legal advice, assuming there's more than one. Like I said, you're the front runner. So we already have something in common. We had a long discussion, so that's a good thing. So I, I think that just, it's prudent to just interview, see who else may be out there. What other interests it has and, and then we can go from there.
So my recommendation would be after you've called your meeting to order in February, that you, that we administer the oath and that she be seated at the beginning of the meeting to participate through the entire agenda.
Yes. Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, very good. So let's see where we're at here.
Staff reports.
We have no new business. Let's move to status reports. We'll take fire rescue chief, you're up, if you'd like to come up and give us a report. I just want to ask you a quick question, sir. You, of course, you like the speed tables. I, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'm sure you would like nothing. And I'm sure there's a lot of residents that want nothing also, but that's another story.
The speed tables are ideal.
Yes.
Would assume your engineer is aware of the different county ordinances. So our fire marshal chief, Dorita, would be somebody who would be in contact with because there are limitations pretty much to the speed bumps or the shorter type ones because it is very, one damaging to the fire apparatus.
Right.
To drive over something like that and then to, you know, we're trying to arrive as quick as we can, you know, in, in, in a safe manner. So it's having to slow down and then accelerate again. It certainly, it, it alters that, that time, our response time. But the speed table is the ideal thing, yes.
Okay, well noted. So talk to us. How are you tonight?
I'm well, Mr. Mayor. How are you? Counsel? Happy. We were able to generate a report for you today. There was some concern over the reports that were being sent. So they're being revamped. We're real close. I'll sit down with town manager probably in the next week or so.
Okay.
To review what they're going to look like. So we, we are, we're able to provide you with statistics still and we will continue moving forward with that. Eighteen calls for the month, slightly lower than what's been average. So I guess that's a good thing, especially during the holiday. Fifteen of those calls were EMS or medical related calls, two were fire alarms. And we were only called to one motor vehicle accident in the area. Average dispatch handling, I know we talk about this every month, thirty-nine seconds. That's the time it takes for that dispatcher to answer the phone, determine what's going on and then alerting the crew to their emergency. Average turnout time for the crew was fifty seconds. So that's the time the alert goes off in the station for the men and women to get out to the fire truck. Average travel time was six minutes and nine seconds for a total average response time of seven minutes and thirty-eight seconds. So our times are very consistent as we see month to month.
Good.
Any questions or comments?
I'll have you know, chief, that I have recently through the Palm Beach County League of Cities been appointed to the hazmat committee.
Oh, excellent.
I've got to call the director for, we have a conflict because Tallahassee, we need to be in Tallahassee on the thirty-first, which is the first meeting that I would be attending. But it's very important that we're there for a couple of the issues that are up for legislation that we kind of want to have our input with our delegation and things of that nature. So I'll take care of that, but I look forward to working with Palm Beach.
Another hat to wear, huh?
Pardon me?
It's another hat for you to wear, huh?
Yes, it's okay. I, it's, it's what we do here.
Sure.
I'm with everybody else. I love this place.
Yeah.
Been born and raised on the Chain of Lakes. I hope to spend the rest of my time here. We'll see how that works out, but I look forward to it.
That's excellent.
Yes.
All right, we, we are presenting an annual report for you. It comes out every year. We print you up a nice booklet and present your, your statistics. We have three vacancies in that division, our planning division. So they are trying to play catch up, but those should be out hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Statistically though, just some numbers on fire rescue for the, for the twenty-twenty-three year Palm Beach County Fire Rescue in the nineteen cities that we service. Almost a hundred and fifty-six thousand calls total, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four. Now you take that dispatch center who also dispatches for another thirteen municipalities. Then every time that phone rings, a call number is generated, two hundred and fifty-four thousand calls into our dispatch center in a one-year period.
Wow.
It's a busy place.
Yes, sounds like it.
We will be opening our fifty-first fire station tomorrow in the Wigan Beach area, Military Trail, Hypoloxo, just south of.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that.
Yep. So it's our fifty-first station. Anticipated call volumes, right around thirty-seven hundred calls for that area that they will be picking up from the surrounding other county fire rescue stations. So it's, it's much needed in that area. Again, you think at some point we're going to slow down, but, but growth is continuing. And if it's not in the land that's left, it's, it's upward. So the population is still increasing.
Sure.
And then until I see you next month, we will be starting our next recruit class in two weeks. We anticipated close to sixty. Every day it gets closer and closer. The number gets a little smaller. I guess people have second thoughts or they're leaving other places of employment. So we're anticipating right around that fifty mark. So that's twelve weeks of training those new recruits go to. So right out of the, the new year, we're already bringing fifty new people on. So.
It truly is a dedication.
It is.
Is fifty, is that standard?
It all depends. We've seen a lot through the, the age of county fire rescue. We're still very young. We're, we're in our. the age of county fire rescue. We're still very young. We're in our our thirty-fifth year of when we consolidated. So you see trends every so many years. So we've been averaging and we can't seem to catch up over two hundred vacancies every year. So we bring on four twelve-week classes. These people, the men and women, come in certified as paramedics, firefighters or para or EMTs and firefighters. Those twelve weeks, it's a condition of employment. They have certain performance objectives. And every time we seem to be catching up, another batch of vacancies just occur because of, you know, it's the way the department works. People are gonna retire. We get a little bigger. We add some more staffing. So it it is a good time if you're looking to get hired in this county as a firefighter. There's there's a lot of opportunity.
Good.
All right.
Very good. Thank you so much. We'll look forward to your report and thank you for being here with us this evening. Okay, safe travels.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, you're up. You have the floor.
Okay, we got three reports. We did, this year I had code enforcement do some stats. I think it'd be good to present them publicly. Last month was a busy month. We responded to three hundred and thirty-eight calls for service, a lot of disturbance, domestic issues. The Marine unit was out trolling the lake. We had eight arrests, anywhere from narcotics to battery trespassing, domestic violence, traffic enforcement. We did a hundred and nine traffic stops for the month. We wrote a hundred and sixteen citations. Twenty-three of those were criminal. We had ten vehicle crashes, one hit and run. The LPR camera system, the seven that we have ran over a hundred and eleven thousand tags. And when we run these tags and check them, we get stolen stolen vehicles, sex offenders, we know who's driving through the town, burglary suspects and stolen tax. There's there's like a dozen different things that we have access to. Code enforcement for last month, thirty-two new violations issued. Eric did two hundred and five re-inspections, a hundred and ninety-three came into compliance, which is fantastic. Fifteen notices of hearing were posted. We had two false alarms where they were fined mailed out and three vacation rental properties were discovered and letters were mailed out to comply with the ordinance. Now I'm gonna do the end of the year report, and I think you'll find this interesting. We responded to five hundred and five thousand, five hundred and three calls of service. Numerous domestics accidents. We handled three death investigations. We filed ninety criminal packets with the state attorney's office felony and misdemeanor for the year. We had a total of ninety-seven arrests, fiscal arrests, where people were booked in county jail. We did four thousand, four hundred and ninety-four traffic stops for the year. We wrote three thousand, two hundred citations, four hundred and sixty-five of those were criminal violations. And that is fantastic for a small department. There's there's police departments with fifty, three times what we have. That probably wouldn't write that many tickets. So the enforcement is there. Code enforcement did one thousand, four hundred and forty-seven violations, which was great. And and I listed all the training that we went to. One training where we had active shooter. One of my part-time officers was retired from the FBI. So we were able to go to that training. We were the only one from the county, but all our officers went through the training with the FBI. So it was the the officers enjoyed it. It was great training for the officers in town. So what I'm gonna have her do is go over the code enforcement, because a lot of people say, well, you don't write enough or you write too many, or people don't comply. Well, compliance is very, very good in in this community. So go ahead.
Like the chief said, fourteen hundred and forty-seven violations were issued. They consisted of work without a permit, health and safety violations. The a few of them were illicit discharges, which are mostly occurring on the lakes, hearing notices. We do issue false alarm fines. There are some that issue where the violations didn't come into compliance and a warning was issued and then a fine was issued. Of the fourteen hundred and forty-seven, he has thirteen eighty, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five that came into compliance with sixty-two cases that are still active. We've also been working with the, together on the town's new ordinance for the vacation rentals. We have, as of today, or yeah, it was lost, we checked, we have sixteen in town. We've mailed out letters to each one. So far of the sixteen, we've had nine in compliance and there still are four who have submitted their applications, but they're just waiting for their inspections, so it can be finalized and then they'll carry into this, to the nine. He's also working on the golf carts. We have fourteen new, had fourteen new registrations and twenty-eight golf cart inspections just for our general last year. And that's pretty much sums it up for the year for code enforcement.
You saw the golf cart parade.
Ninety-seven.
There's a lot of golf carts.
They're very. We have quite a bit, and believe it or not, a lot of people are very supportive of our ordinance and people that don't even live in town will come and register the golf carts with us, so they can use them within the town.
Let me just ask a quick question on the false alarm fines. Are there any warnings or do they get two warnings or three warnings after the fourth one, there's a fine, something?
Correct. So you get three false alarms when it hits the fourth. That's when you'll get the fine.
Okay, because I have a property in Palm Beach County where my secretary was feeding the cats and I said, please don't feed the cats. And she would let him inside and then forget they were inside and they'd set off the motion detectors and they'd come and they were very good about that. So I I'm glad to hear that. That's good. So after the after the fourth one?
Yes.
Yes.
For the record, there's a fine.
Yep. It's for the calendar year. It starts over every January first.
Yeah. Okay, Taylor, you have any questions for the chief or Dana?
Thank you for your tremendous work.
And thank you for yours and welcome aboard.
John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief and team, thank you so much for all your hard work. I I do have a follow-up question. I know with the money we got and the resident came forward and talking about the boat ramp and just some of the XF traffic there and some of the things, parking and some of the things there. I know there's an ordinance that we have that they have to have a decal. And it's free to get the decal within the town and to be able to park there. Do is that something that we carry any weight with that? Like even though they're there without a decal, can we, do we cite them? Or we don't worry about it? Like what, tell me that process.
Well, we encourage people to do that. The history of that is, is that that was a town boat ramp. So it was less money to register and then it was like three times the amount for the county to have access. What happened to upgrade and to comply with the guidelines from the state, we took grants.
Right.
And when you take grants, it's open to everybody.
Right.
The the issue is that like our parks up in Pine Tree Park, Memorial Park, there's no parking. The idea of that was many years ago was they didn't want people parking and it turned up, it was for the residents to walk to or you could take a golf cart now to it. But all of our parks, except for Candace, where you were of Candace Road, there's parking there. But those were really designed, the parks were designed for local residents to use. And once, one of the trade-offs, when you get money from the government, you know, you have to be open and let, that's why the sign, some people complain, oh, you gotta sign up on Congress and it's bringing people in. But we're required to do that to comply with the grant. So that's kind of the history. I hope that.
You know, that that does help for sure, but I'm thinking about our own town ordinance that we either need to change or update because I believe, Mr. Scheck, the town ordinance says that they have to get a decal to park there or they need a decal to park in the town.
Well, we we like them to have a decal, so we can kind of know who's parking there.
Right.
It's free and
Right.
if we go down there and somebody doesn't have a parking.
Do we have any enforcement? Can we do anything about it if they don't have a decal per se, chief?
We can only ask them to get.
Okay, that's that's about the extent.
Where you can cite them for not having it.
Right.
We can just ask them to get it. We can't charge them for it. But the idea is to give the town an idea of who's using the boat ramp. Or, you know, let's say, you know, one of the cameras catches something or somebody damages property and we got a partial tag. Sometimes we can use that data to follow up on that and see who damaged it. It can be used as different avenues, but we just, we can't charge for it.
At at one time, it was a fifty-dollar fine many, many, many years.
Years ago, okay. I know we talked about enforcement and you guys are doing a phenomenal job there. I just didn't know. I don't want to call it, I mean, like a citation. I know that's scary language, but maybe something like an encouragement or a warning or hey, education, an education piece, please stop by here and get a free decal. So we kind of know, you know, whatever police language you use there to make sure we've got some surveillance. And I'm thinking that might slow it down a bit. At a very minimum, we'll know who was there.
More than happy to try that. The marine officer, I'll talk to him about doing that when he's putting the boat in and out to to look and.
That'd be fantastic.
Encourage him to do that.
That'd be fantastic, chief. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Eric's here on Saturdays. We can ask him to hang out at the boat ramp and pass it a few more times and educate people.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, you weren't here when the resident came up about the jet skiers that are using the boat ramp for, and I've seen them and and we've talked about this.
Yeah.
You know, doing their maintenance or doing whatever. And it's different from I'm using my jet ski in the lake and I have a breakdown or I have to do a repair, because some of them, and I saw them more than once this week, last week, actually. They get there, they, one of the guy has three. I mean, they're great. I'm an advocate. You cannot stop the jet skiers. It's a watercraft. And you know me, I I like the watercrafts. But if they see them, possibly just go down there. It's just, it's.
I I had talked to him in the past, sometimes the block.
Yeah.
And and it's hard for people getting out, because they'll they'll block up and take and you can only get in and out. So we we have talked to him about that. And there's a way that we can rectify that more.
Yeah. We we like the word we recommend. And maybe they'll get the, you know, they'll get the gist. And like I said, it's just, it's it's etiquette. Well, listen, some of the big boys come in there and I don't know why they wash their engines out with that water, but they do. And that's why we came to that years ago to take that money, because we were repairing the boat ramp and they would just still come in there and and you can't have constant enforcement. It's just not, it's just not gonna happen. That's why we decided to take those dollars through the grant is to reinforce it. We won't have that problem anymore. They can back a forty footer in there and wash your engines out all they want. But sometimes they do the same thing. The boat's so big, they're in the middle. But spend my experience, and I use a boat ramp quite a bit, that if you're kind and nice and you go up there and like, can you give me a little room? They do. So.
Well, one thing I'd like to share that I did mention before the holidays, the threat level is very high. We have a diverse community in South Florida. Some of the stuff is confidential. I can't talk about. All I can say is be very careful. Like when we did the tree lighting and the parade, we spent weeks gathering information, intel. And a lot of times say, whoa, why do you do all that work? We're gonna have to in Lake Clark Shores. Well, anytime you have an event where you have a large amount of people, you have to do security and do the operational manuals, contact the fusion center so they know what's going on. So the threat level is still very high because of the stuff going on in the Middle East. So I recommend everybody be careful, watch where you go and your surroundings. So we did not have any issues, so over the holidays in this community.
Job well done. Okay, Mr. Scheck.
My report is included in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We have any questions for Mr. Scheck?
I do not.
Nope. Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Lubello, you have the floor.
Yeah, my report is also in the packet, but I'll just go over a few things. We already discussed, we'd like to have the next meeting on the twentieth. We do have some conflicts, so that would be the third Tuesday instead of the second Tuesday. Please let me know if that's an issue. Then we'll go back in March on twelfth, on the second Tuesday. Upcoming events, we have tomorrow, all the seniors are invited. We have our senior club right here in the chambers from eleven to two. It's called Footprints. It's every month, the attendance is getting higher and higher. Last month, we had tables from Tony, what the whole, the whole thing, right, Tony? It was it was pretty good. So everybody seems to be happy. So please come out if you're a senior. We also have the Valentine's Day food truck event on February ninth. We have tentatively, I've told council all this about ribbon cutting for the pickleball, tentatively for the Friday, the twenty-third at four P M. So that's, so just want to talk about some things in my report. One is the Pine Tree Bridge. As discussed, we're redesigning it to not have one lane open at a time. It will be totally closed during the duration of the construction, which will make the construction time less and hopefully we'll get more bidders. We also are asking for more money from the state. That's one of the reasons why council member Maples, the mayor, Freeball and myself went up to Tallahassee last week. We started the process of asking for money. We we already got six hundred thousand dollars to help us with the bridge, but we're asking for more money. So we'll keep you informed with that. Other things that I've told the mayor and I've told the council is we're concerned about some of those bad bills that are up there. They're not city friendly. One of them has to do with utilities. Two of them has to do with utilities. One of the, and the biggest thing is you cannot transfer money to the general fund from, and that's been a practice in Florida for hundreds and hundreds of years. And they're they're looking at trying to do away with that or limit it. It's it's been in the past, hasn't passed in the past legislatures sessions, but this time it's going through committee. So we're concerned about that. Vacation rentals is again is on there to do away with any kind of inspection for vacation rentals or limit the amount you can charge to a no fee permit or a fifty-dollar fee permit. So that would basically do away with our program. Sovereign immunity is up again, which that is how much you can sue a municipality. We, all governments in Florida, you can only sue for two hundred thousand dollars. If you want more than that, you have to get a claims bill. It has to go through the legislature and that is under attack again. And they passed through committee yesterday at seventeen to one. So it's got some traction. So those are the big things. We're working Tallahassee. We just started the process and the bills are more concerning, we're just as concerned as getting more money. So just want to let you all know that.
Any questions for Mr. Lubello?
Thank you.
What date was the change for the meeting?
The twentieth. It's the third Tuesday.
Second Tuesday to the third.
Okay, February twentieth.
Yes. Yeah, it's on, it's on, it's on there. I already changed it, because. So, thank you.
Any questions? I have no questions at this time either. Well, good. Okay, so we will move on to council comments. Taylor, you're up. You have the floor.
Just want to thank everybody for everything they're doing for our great town. I I didn't mention this, but I also wanted to say something about the code enforcement board who I don't, it's sort of like a thankless position here, but I'm very grateful to those members. I did that role. And it's not an easy position to be in, but that was an incredible amount of code enforcement that they worked on for us as residents. And thank you to my fellow council members who spent their time in Tallahassee advocating for us, what, a week ago?
Yes.
Mr. Maples?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, thank you, everyone, for coming out. I know you know, it started the new year, everyone's trying to get back in their routine. So thank you, everyone, for spending your evening with us. I do want to and Joe, I guess I better ask before I say, we're putting together an expert panel that we want residents to get some information, but we're looking for the experts per se to be invited to this panel on that discussion. And and so, Joe, would it be okay if residents, if they had a recommendation of an expert, could they email you or?
Please call me, contact me anyway. If you have somebody that's you think would be valuable in this charrette or workshop that we're planning, please let me know.
And that's for the sept through the sewer, just everyone's clear. We're building a workshop for that. We want panels. We want folks that will bring some knowledge to that table for that discussion. And really, beyond that, we spent some time together. I think three days, Tallahassee, driving in the car, getting to know my council members. And then we grabbed some subs, talked to our fellow elected officials in Tallahassee spent the night rested and jumped in the car and headed back home. So I think I think we gotta go round two on that. Sounds like that's gonna be important. So be thinking about us. We're trying our best in Tallahassee to do what we need to do to get the money we need for our town. So be thinking about us. We're trying our best in Tallahassee to do what we need to do to get the money we need for our town. And to continue to make it the best town in Palm Beach County. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. So I consider every trip that we make to Tallahassee a, a good effort. We all learned something. We should learn something. And it's, it's how you get to know people in, in the county. This one, the next one will be geared towards the League of Cities, which are, are other folks that are doing the same jobs that we're doing. I've been long saying Tallahassee takeover. We need to advocate for home rule. We know best what's going on in our own communities. I, our delegation is strong up there. There will be some changes due to term limits and things of that nature. I thought it was productive. You know, it's, you can only do so much. You get one day. You get fifteen minutes. Sometimes you get the, the representative or the senator. Sometimes you get their staff. It all depends. So we're working hard to get more appointments up there. Because this is our shot to do it. You get these two days and that's basically it. So we keep working towards that. The dollars for the bridge are important. The bridges need addressing. And hopefully, you know, we were explained how the whole process works and it's still a learning curve for me after, after all these years. On how you get awarded the money by the time you go to bid, the prices change, that money changes. So we've already been awarded money for the bridge, but we've gotta go back to get more. That's one of the sticky wickets with what we're doing here on this one. So hopefully it's, we're gonna have success and all that will work out good. Wish everyone a happy new year. We have a lot on the table this year. We have a lot of community building events going on. We're gonna have pretty much new council members up here. And we're always accessible. You can always talk to us. When you know we're going to Tallahassee, if there's something you wanna bring to the table. Shoot an email, get ahold of Mr. Labello. We, we do have a good relationship with our delegation throughout Palm Beach County. So that's the good news. And some of them will be returning here to go for county commission. And it's through building our relationships that we really will make a difference in, in a town of Lake Clark Shores. Cuz the relationships mean everything. And, and that's one of the major things we're doing when we do that, is building the relationships. So I think that February twentieth will give us time to, to look for others who are interested in being on council. Make a proper decision, cuz what we do up here does affect us down the road and it affects the future. If you've noticed, a lot of people, I've been raised here, I've been born and raised here, I've been around here my whole life. It's important to the future of the town that what we're doing up here now is. Spot on and, and we get it right. And, and we try hard to get things right. It's not always easy. There's a lot of give and take. It's a compromise. But I think that as long as we are doing what we know is best for the community in the long run, everything will work itself out. And that's been my approach for all of the time that I've been sitting up here. And I take it seriously. I work very hard at it. And I, you know, I look forward to this future that we're gonna have with, with our new council. Taylor, welcome. And John, it was good to get to spend some time with you, get to know you.
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to more. Sometimes you heard them say, oh, you guys, all, all three of you up here. So you have power in numbers. So when you, in the old days, we had the entire council and, and the, the town manager going. It, it means something. And you don't always hear it from them, but trust me, they see us and they know us. And you have a presence when you look at one or two people going versus your entire council. They know you're working towards a common goal. We all may have our different opinions. We may have our different thoughts and all that kind of stuff. But when we're all together and we go there and we see the delegation, and in the past, we've been meeting with representatives and senators. Who are not always part of our delegation. That speaks volumes also. So it's, it's a good effort and I think we had a lot of success, really. And I think when they see us back up there for League of Cities days, and you, it's a long journey, but it's worthy. It's only twice a year. And, and so we'll be good to go. So I'm gonna leave you, as I've been doing in the past, these are not my words, but this is a quote. And if you're so inclined, you can go look it up and see who said this. But confidence is contagious. And so is lack of confidence. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So move. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor.